Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Circe.
Welcome, everyone. There's no change to our agenda this evening. Coming up next week, Wednesday, March 4th, we, the city council has a closed session to receive legal advice that will begin at 7:00. And then we come back here and we have our voting session. I'm taking tentative off the 2020 Climate Emergency Response Framework Resolution. We will be voting on that next week. We also have a resolution authorizing the closure of Ann Street on Saturday, May 2nd, for the Crossroads Spring Fest. Our work session will include election code amendments, Recreation Center Community Engagement Contract, and FY 2020 Budget Amendment Number 3. That then takes us to Wednesday, March 11th. That evening, we'll start our meeting at 7:30. We have the Council Compensation Task Force Report. Our voting session that evening will be the Single Reading Ordinance awarding a contract for the Recreation Center Community Engagement. First Reading Ordinance authorizing FY 2020 Budget Amendment Number 3. And our work session that evening is the Police Department's annual report for 2019. On Wednesday, March 18th, at 7:30, we will have the, our city council meeting at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. That evening, we'll have public hearings on traffic calming on the 7600 block and the 7300 block of Wildwood Drive. And tentatively, we'll have a public hearing on our stormwater management fee system. Our voting session on the night of March 18th is the First Reading Ordinance amending the election code, Second Reading Ordinance authorizing the FY 2020 Budget Amendment Number 3, and the Tree Ordinance Amendment and Tree Canopy Goal. Is there a change?
You might want to just note on March 11th, the write-on presentation.
Oh, I skipped that, I'm sorry. Yes. And on March 11th, at 6:30, before the meeting, we have six.
Six.
Done, okay.
Sorry about that. Sorry, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM on March 11th, we will have a representative from Montgomery County write on. They'll provide us some information. And then there'll be time for Q&amp;A with the public. As we've done in the past, we usually have the opportunity for the city council members of the public to ask questions. So, please come to that. All right, and then we talked about March 18th, at the meetings at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. And that's all we got so far. Talking about legislative updates, a few things that we are putting in testimony for this week. We are at the halfway mark of the session in Annapolis. Thank goodness. It's been a lot this year. The police chief is sending in testimony or a letter regarding the Trust Act, as we have in the past. Councilmember Smith is writing a letter regarding the highway user revenue fees. And we have a number of pedestrian bills that we have supported. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic, for writing testimony for that. These are bills that are, look at expanding protections for pedestrian and pedestrian safety. Thank you, Councilwoman Dibala, for writing the testimony for a bill on low and moderate income housing energy performance targets. This would expand our current state programs on energy efficiency for low and moderate income households. And that's, I think, everything that we did this past week. And we will continue to update folks on the legislation that we are taking positions on. I think tonight, we also have an update from our youth council. Is that? No?
I thought he was gonna be here.
All right.
Yeah, I did, I did see him.
Okay, well, if he pops in, it's only 7:35, so. If we see George in a minute, we'll have him go then. And having no other business before this, we'll open it up for public comments. Anyone have public comments this evening? Go ahead, Mr. Chuie.
Thank you all for coming and putting up with this. I'm not sure to have the patience. My name's Mary Jane Machuie, Ward 2. Parents especially, these adults, but what I'm gonna talk to be is just me personally. And I am partially disabled myself. I have bipolar, but physically, I have, I have a hard time seeing things. I can't see dimensionally, three dimensionally. And of course, I can't think three dimension because I can't see. So, I've had problems with these bump outs and the street narrowings on my street. And, and also, it hurts my bones because I'm getting, have osteoporosis. Hurts my bones when I go over the very high speedhunts. Why do they have to be so high, so many of them? And, and the bump out that they put on the, near the corner of Jackson and Boyd, without, without asking for me, asking me for any input at all. I can't walk on, I used to be able to walk for many, for the 30 years, 34 years I've lived there. I've been able to walk there until they put that damn bump out. And it really bothers me because they put, people have planted this vegetation. I can't walk there anymore. I have to walk on the streets. I'm supposed to get hit by a car because these people wanna bump out. I mean, and it's not just me. People need to walk and be able to safely on both sides of the street. And it's not true a lot of places. And I, and you talk about helping immigrants. Well, the people who deliver mail, a lot of them are immigrants. And their, their lives are being risked too when they can't walk on both sides of the streets. And, and please, it just, it just worries me. And I guess I'm going, getting too general here, but when I heard the term "traffic calming," I just cringe now because it seems like it never helps me or my son. It makes it worse, actually, the way they do it. I think you should be able to walk safely on both sides of the street. And I'm concerned about the parking. There's less parking now because they took all these parking to give to people so they can rev up their electric vehicles. I can't afford an electric vehicle. How about helping me and people like me buy an electric vehicle? Instead of having a Doley's turning into a whole electric vehicles charging station. I mean, a lot of us can't afford electric vehicles. Please take that in consideration. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machuie. I see our youth council rep has showed up. Mr. Ashford, if you'd like to give us your report, that'd be awesome.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little late there. My bad. So, since our last youth council update, we've had a number of things. We had our documentary screening here in the city auditorium. It was a success. We had a good amount of people come out. And they heard an awesome speech from Heather Booth after the documentary. And that was a lot of fun for a lot of people. I think they got a lot out of it, got inspired to take action on issues that they care about. And that's the goal. We have also, since then, been working on organizing a youth canvas for Delegate Charcuni and CCE Bill. That should be happening in two to three weeks with a number of youth environmental organizations at Blair High School to try and get kids out to knock on doors in districts of delegates who have yet to support the bill to help make sure it can get passed so that, assuming we do pass our climate plan, we can then commit to a fully green city. And on that environmental plan, I have the youth council official statement on the plan, which I will now read. "We are lucky to live in a city whose residents are committed to making the world a better place. Tacoma Park cares about the environment. Many of us have meaningfully changed our lifestyles to live more sustainably. But, when the city council first introduced a climate emergency response plan, we saw a different side of Tacoma. We saw people doubting our ability to make a difference. And despite the incredible work that so many Tacoma residents have done, we saw people resisting even the possibility that they would be inconvenienced in the interest of lower emissions. On behalf of the Tacoma Park Youth City Council, I ask that both the city council and those in attendance consider our perspective. Climate change is a crisis and an emergency. The city has recognized that fact, and it is a fact that I doubt many here would dispute. Our generation will inevitably face a world that is meaningfully different than the one we live in today, one that is less hospitable for human life. In this context, the objections that we hear against strong action to reduce emissions ring hollow. One of the most common of those objections is that Tacoma can't have enough of an impact, and therefore, trying isn't worth it. This is the exact kind of thinking that created the climate crisis in the first place and allowed it to continue unchecked for so long. It's called the tragedy of the commons. Peoples, cities, and corporations believe that what they're doing individually won't make a big enough difference to stop doing it. The problem is that everyone adopts that same mindset, and before you know it, global temperatures are rising at unprecedented rates. The only way to change it is for someone to step up and hope that more people will follow. Cities are doing exactly that around the country. With this resolution, we would set ourselves on the path to joining them. The revised revolution is in many ways better than the original, particularly with more robust language surrounding racial equity, et cetera. However, it lacks the specificity, and most importantly, the commitment to a timeline that will ensure this plan is actually borne out. We advise the city council to add the timeline originally created by the Sustainability Manager to its equivalent areas in the revised resolution. This would ensure that future councils are forced to consider the policies we've identified as the most feasible and effective in a timely manner, and stick to a schedule that would ensure our goal of net zero by 2040, 2035, excuse me. With that addition, this resolution must be passed. Tacoma Park must be a part of the solution to the global climate crisis, however small a part, and cities around the state, and show cities around the state and country what it looks like to step up to this existential challenge. The young people of our city are counting on you. Thank you."
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I would like to thank the youth council for partnering with Adventist Community Services for the Climate Change Forum last week. I think the forum was excellent, and I think it was enhanced by the council's participation in that. And I want to apologize to you and the council for not giving proper recognition to the youth council during the forum.
I was wondering if we could get a copy of the statement you just wrote also.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, and we will continue with public comments. Do we have any other public comments this evening? All right. Nobody else? All right, we will move on then. We will move on to council comments. Any comments from the city council?
That was it?
That was it? That's all you got? All right, you're done. Councilman Kostic.
I have a couple of things. A couple of events over the past week or so. I had an opportunity to attend the program commemorating and remembering Mr. Lee Jordan here in the auditorium. It was a fantastic event. A lot of people, it was a packed house, standing room only in the back. And just fantastic stories and memories that people told about him and his impact on the community and on them personally. So, I'm really grateful to the organizers of that and grateful to have had the opportunity to attend it. And I'm looking forward to the future efforts that are continuing to collect more stories and put those into a preservation method that we can all have access to so that, long-term, we can continue to remember him and his legacy. We also, over the weekend, had our Shop Purple event in the crossroads. Councilmember Circe, Councilmember Dibala, Mayor Stewart and I were all there. And a large number of residents came out, and we walked around the crossroads area, visited a number of businesses, had an opportunity to do some shopping and have some lunch. And I really want to thank Kaylee and Carmen from the Crossroads Development Authority who were there and gave us a tour, and all of the businesses who participated and welcomed us. It was a really great event, and I hope we can do more of that in the future. And I also just want to remind people, you don't necessarily need an event to go out and shop. You can go out even, even without that. So, I hope people will, will take advantage of the great businesses we have there. I'm also working with Laura Barclay from the old Tacoma Business Association. And she is planning an event in March, on March 14th, around 11:00 AM. We're still finalizing details. But that would look at, it would be a similar concept with a tour that residents could go on to take, quote unquote, "take a second look", looking at the second-story businesses in Old Town and the Junction. Kind of an educational opportunity to learn about some places you might not, might be, might be less familiar with. So, I'm looking forward to that. And then yesterday, Councilmember Kovar and I were both at Mr. Doley's RS Automotive for the governor's visit. He came and honored RS Automotive and Mr. Doley for his leadership in changing over from a gas station to an all-electric station. And it was a very nice event. And then two upcoming events. There will be a Westmoreland Area Community Organization, WACO, Neighborhood Association meeting on Monday, March 2nd, at 7:30 PM here in the Azalea Room. We'll be talking about a variety of different topics, but specifically focused on stormwater and climate and the climate resolution. And then there is also going to be a meeting on March 3rd in the evening. Time's still TBD for Poplar Avenue residents. So, if you're interested in either of those, please let me know, and I'll be happy to connect you with the details. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and I appreciate that Councilmember Kostic mentioned the governor's visit. And just want to add in that it was a good opportunity for us to have a welcome for the governor and the comptrollers there as well. Mr. Doley received an award and recognition, which was great. And I think promoting electric vehicles and the charging station fits in well with what we're going to be talking about, have been talking about, and will continue to be talking about on climate change. So, happy to be part of that event. And the other, just one other thing I wanted to mention also about the climate resolution, I just want to thank everybody, including the mayor, who came to the Ward 1 meeting we had on Monday night to talk about this. I think we kind of exceeded the Hydrangea Room's capacity. We... I just want to say that
We were fine.
The people up front brought us some extra chairs, and it all worked out well. And it was a really, a great opportunity. I think everybody who wanted to talk had a chance to do that and got a lot of additional thoughts on ways to, I think, in positive ways, continue to amend the resolution in ways that will make it work better. So, thank everybody for having attended, and thank the mayor for having been there as well.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, it was a busy weekend because we also had, there was a presentation here and a series of testimonials for Lee Jordan on Sunday afternoon that I found really, really moving. And anybody who hasn't, who can see that, it was taped. And it would, and if you have a chance to watch even a part of the presentation and what people, the stories people told, it was really impressive. And then, right after that, the Azalea Awards were announced. And I think that they're posted on the Tacoma Foundation site. But there's a number of folks that have, in the community, that have received awards. I won't go into the details. And last but not least, another climate-related topic. Tomorrow night is the County Climate Town Hall, where the five work groups that have been working for several months with, on county recommendations will, will be presenting their recommendations. And there'll be, like, open tables where you can go around and talk to folks.
It's at capacity.
It's at, I was just getting to. They have now posted
Oh, did they?
Finally posted an online link
Yeah.
to be able to read the, read the recommendations and make comments. So, if you're not already signed up and you can't physically get in, you can still participate. It'll also be livestreamed somehow, I forget, whether it's Facebook or, or YouTube. I don't remember the details. But if you go to the, to the site for the workshop itself, it'll have the details about how to, how to watch remotely and participate through online comments. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Circe.
So, I just want to echo Councilmember Kostic's appreciation for Kaylee and Carmen's work on the Shop Purple event on Saturday. It was a great opportunity to patron businesses in the crossroads area. Also received quite a bit of press. And I want to thank councilmembers Dibala and Mayor Stewart for attending as well. I want to thank residents in New Hampshire Gardens last night. We had a Neighborhood Association meeting and had an opportunity to talk at length about traffic. So, we were able to do the necessary votes for the purpose of next steps in terms of speed bump requests. But residents are working to try to coordinate even more to also identify intersections that would require fresh paint, particularly those near bus stops. And also, working and looking forward to working with staff on, on things like addressing problems with signage around circles and things like that. So, definitely appreciate those that were able to come out last night and look forward to additional discussions about traffic. Also, I received a note, and I want to share this. The Washington Area Bicycleists Association is hosting a Latinx community listening session in Langley Park on Saturday. And the goal is to try to get a better understanding of the factors that impact the Latinx experience with transportation and traffic safety. And it is at the Langley Park Community Center, which is on the Prince George's side of University Boulevard.
Yeah, it's on Merrimack.
Merrimack, yes. So, definitely encourage those who, who are interested in participating to attend. And I'm trying to see the time. I don't have the time without clicking on something separate, but we can get that information out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have just a couple of updates. We already talked about the Lee Jordan Day was really phenomenal. I just want to underscore that again. And I'm very much looking forward to more of the interviews and the work that the Historic Tacoma is doing with folks. And again, thank you and congratulations to all the Azalea Award winners. And that was also a wonderful event. Just wish they weren't at the same time. With a little bit of running around on Sunday. I also want to thank the residents of Franklin Apartments, and especially Carolyn Robinson, for putting together a wonderful memorial for Norman Ridwell. We had a proclamation to him last week. And thank you to Councilmember Siemens and Joyce Siemens. It was a, it was a wonderful memorial celebration of Norman's life, so. Shop Purple was awesome. I went home this afternoon, and the, whatever I'm gonna call that woobie thing I bought, it was really wonderful to put on and work on a cold, kind of rainy afternoon. So, that's great. Census 2020 is upon us. We just started pushing out the public service announcements. I'll have to say, I think Councilwoman Kostic, yours might be the best one. I was looking at them. I don't know. We were looking at them tonight. So, check those out. You will see them on social media. But please, please remind folks to fill out the census. And there'll be more information on that coming soon. The other thing that I said last week and gonna continue to talk about are the wires, the black telecom wires that you see dangling from poles. If you see any around in Tacoma Park, please note the number on the pole and the street it's on, and you can send it to me. If it's easy just to take a picture and email that to me, I can pull the information off of it. But it's also helpful to have the street number, the street name as well. So, I'm gonna probably, collecting all of these and probably do it for another week or two, and then send off a very long list to Comcast. And fingers crossed, they actually respond. The last thing is, I just wanted to let folks know and thank Councilwoman Dibala for a lot, a lot of work updating the climate emergency resolution, reflecting the comments we had in our work session last week. The new draft resolution is posted on the city website with our agenda item for next week. I know a number of council members have already been talking about potential amendments for next week. I ask that, since we, it's a resolution, it's only one vote, that if people have amendments, that you send them to the council and the city clerk beforehand. That's not for us to discuss them beforehand, but just so we have them written out. It'll make it easier for, I think, residents to follow along and for the city clerk to keep track of amendments. So, if you could do that before our meeting next week. And that's it for me. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. Couple miscellaneous announcements this evening. One is that we have this weekend, we've issued a film permit in Forest Park. For the Washington Post is doing a, filming an episode of Throwback Thursday. It includes a crew of three to four people. It does not restrict other people from using the park. But it is something that, because of the nature of, of this, we're asking a couple of requests as part of their permit to, to do this. One is to post a sign notifying the public that there's filming taking place, for which a city of Tacoma Park permit was issued. And the sign will include contact information if somebody wants to contact the producer for more information. The applicant does not have exclusive use of the park and playground. And I believe there's even an opportunity, if somebody wants to have their kid in there, they can. But, but that's something I just wanted people to know about. I received notice late today that the Level 2 electric vehicle chargers that we have here at the community center and at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center are being upgraded, and they will require a char, you'll need to pay for them. It'll be the same rate as those that are being charged by RS Automotive. So, this is something, when we got them originally, they were supposed to be free for three years. We're way past that time. They are being upgraded. And so, we're giving some notice that that's the, that that's coming out. I know there was a question about the cost of the Pepco chargers at BYU Morrison Park, that those prices had doubled. We need to double-check and find out what the system is. The difficulty with that is that the way that, that it's calculated, it's hard to compare with RS Automotive. So, I can't tell you what that comparison is. Did you have a question about that? I'm sorry. The Citizen Application Clinic is coming up. So, on Saturday, March 4, uh, March 7th, from 10:30 AM to 2:30 PM here, we're cosponsoring with the Asian Pacific American Legal Resource Center, Citizen, Citizenship Application Clinic. We'll have immigration attorneys here available to provide assistance in completing naturalization applications and with fee waivers or reduced fee applications. This is important because the prices are going up. So, we wanted to make sure that we're helping people because I think it's almost doubling. And so, we're trying to help them be able to do these processes with a significant cost. Is there any material or brochure or handout? There's a brochure. We'll be getting that word out. There's a flyer about it. Yeah, a flyer. How could I get a few copies? We'll, we'll get it out. We just, like I said, I just got this information. But it's also listed here that the clinics for individuals who are at least 18 years old have lived in the United States as a green card holder for more than five years and have been physically present in the US for more than two and a half years. So, and we're also happy that some of our residents with So, and we're also happy that some of our residents with immigration law experience will be volunteering as well.
That's great.
Quick note, we list those rental properties that fall into the right of first refusal categories. One property that the city is not pursuing to acquire is Unit 615 of 7333 New Hampshire Avenue, which is a condominium unit. And finally, I wanted to note that last week there were a couple of questions on the quarterly financial report, and there were several either departments or lines that exceeded 50% of their budgeted item by the end of the second quarter. There was an error, so in the Public Works Budget, some amount got attributed to the wrong line, so that has been corrected, so there's not an overage. There is a higher number in the urban forest line because a lot of tree work was done, so that's one area where that there was, it did exceed the 50%. And in the Housing and Community Development Administrative Line, there was a personnel reason, a one-time personnel reason for that amount to go over 50%. On all of these, none of those items trigger a funding concern in my view, given the circumstances. So I did want to address that. The final thing I wanted to mention, and I've been asking for more information, I don't have it yet, is that at the chapter meeting of the Maryland, of the Montgomery County Maryland Municipal League meeting with the county executive, some information was handed out about municipal tax duplication. According to a new process that the county is trying, is trying to ramp up a little bit the payments to municipalities, particularly for road, road reimbursements, they gave very complic, we're in asterisks in this chart. It's always you're in asterisks. We are to gain just under $200,000 in the FY21 budget under, under the tax duplication process that they're suggesting. I personally think the number, even in this process, should be higher, but I'm, they are to send us additional, the documentation about how they came up with these various numbers. And I just received a, a response of the right person that should be contacting me, so I hope to have that information shortly.
Great. I think one thing, actually two things I forgot to mention. I was asked by a resident, actually on Monday night from Ward 1, if the city would put out anything regarding the coronavirus.
So, no, I think that the right answer is to look at the County Health Department website and the CDC's website. It's difficult for us to, with it being such a fast-moving, changing information, I don't want to have something that is slow. I believe we have a, there may be a link to the CDC on our website, but, but really the CDC website is the place to go for information. Having said that, we certainly have within the region, the various health departments are working together in case there's some action that needs to be taken in this area. As part of my role with the Chief Administrative Officers Committee of the Council of Governments, we've had a briefing on it, we're in line to get a briefing if there's any change of something that would affect this region. I'm anticipating getting a briefing on that again because of the changed information that we, we seem to learn. The one thing I do want to advise everyone is that if you take precautions for the flu, it pretty much is precautions for the coronavirus, and so please, you know, the whole coughing into your, show, into the, your arm thing, and don't come to work when you're sick, helps us all. And so we, we will keep the concern careful. Obviously, our emergency preparedness folks pay attention to this as well, but at this point, I prefer not to, to be a, a particular site for information.
Yeah, and completely agree with that, if, consider sending out something that says, "Go to the CDC" website.
Okay.
That might just be useful for people to have. And there was, oh, and the other thing is that last night there was the meeting to present for the vision study that S H A, S H A was doing at Tacoma Junction. I was unable to attend the meeting myself, I've gotten lots of emails from residents regarding it, and did send an email this afternoon to the S H A staff person who is running this and asking when the city council and the government in the city may actually receive a report with their recommendations, so.
Right, and I, you know, we certainly, as the information is posted, we will share that. I am dismayed that we're not somebody that would be contacted since there's property, property of ours involved in this. I will also say that from what I saw, it seemed like an awfully expensive process to come up with pavement markings.
Mm-hmm, especially since those were recommendations that our staff gave many years ago, so.
So, we will, we will see, but I think I am concerned about, about, about the information. My understanding is that they still want to come back again with, to the stakeholder group with more information. I'm not sure when we'll see an end to the process.
Okay, thank you. All right. Just turned off my mic, sorry. Moving on now to our work session, and we're right on time. Eight oh five. Mr. Lookmeyer, welcome back, it's good to see you. You seem to want to just kind of set things up where we are and-
Sure, so one of the things that, you know, we've got a big project to renovate the library, it's been talked about for a long time, it's been worked on for quite a while, and it's very important that we come back on a regular basis to provide updates. One of the things that we would do in any event, but the council particularly asked for, is updates at about this point in the design process. One of the things that we were particularly concerned about was the, the second part of the floodplain study that needed to be done. An earlier floodplain report was presented to the council, which had to do with the existing conditions. What is the floodplain for the existing conditions? And then another set of floodplain testing needed to be done for if the building were expanded in the way that has been proposed, what impact would that have on the floodplain? If the impact would have been large, then we would have had very serious discussions about not doing the project, changing the project, spending a lot of money on regrading, topographical changes. That's not the response that we got. What that, once we did receive some information on that quite recently, then there was an opportunity to also get cost information from a, as independent cost estimator. During all of that time, we've been working with Greg Lookmeyer and his staff on some of the, he's been doing investigational work, and there's been some discussions with the library about what, with the small changes that raising the buil, raising, raising both ways, right? Raising the building and raising the floor to, to have a, a new structure, given the floodplain requirements, does allow for a little bit of changes on the interior of the building that may add some flexibility to the design, so he's been exploring that with us. And so today, we have Mr. Lookmeyer here, he's going to be going through kind of the work to date and, and covering all those topics, and I'm going to introduce him now. Greg, you're on, you're on.
Thank you. I'm actually very happy to be here, and I'm hoping this is the last time you have to see this picture. I hope there's something new to, to show you, and, and that's part of what we're going to be talking about this evening. This picture also, parenthetically, does represent pretty much the top of the, the current flood wall that you see, and for all intents and purposes, that pretty much is going to be the finished floor elevation of the new library. So if you can imagine, one of the things we talked about some time ago when we talked about renovation, is that if in fact you raised the floor of the library but left the roof where it was, those of you who are over about six feet two would not have had much headroom, and so that's really the reason why the library is to be raised with a Z, and, but it, I think it's a, it's a good illustration. You all know this is what the existing library looks like, just not something particularly new. This has not changed in terms of its concept of where things are to be added. The main entrance will still be from the parking lot side, and, but the plan has changed, and I'll show you that in a second. We are infilling the courtyard, but retaining that big chiller that's between, outside the rec department. There'll be a piece of the library that's expanded out toward Philadelphia, and then this lounge piece really spans the opening over the garage. This all adds up to approximately 19,000 square feet, which is not quite double what you have today. This is a slide I think I showed you before with the existing elevations of the two buildings, the Community Center and the library. The Community Center is about 10 inches higher, and there's a ramp obviously that gets you down into the library. The blue lines illustrate the extent, the horizontal extent of the floodplain. Those lines that are perpendicular are places where they have, in effect, cut a section, taken a knife through the, the land and establishes the height of the floodplain. What's been rather difficult is that the way the floodplain is determined is based on a totally different datum than surveying is based, and so we keep having to make these transitions. There is a .7 foot difference between the two, and one has to do with, I guess, the way FEMA does it versus the way the surveyors do it. But in any case, the whole notion and the question was, all right, we expand the library, and does it raise the floodplain to the point where it has an impact on the cost or the elevation? Quite frankly, within the last day, I finally received this drawing, which illustrates in a gray shade the extent of the new library with those same cross-sections and the same floodplain, and the calculations show that it really hasn't changed even an inch. Surprise. So, that was good news, so it confirms basically what we thought. However, when we look at Blow Up, this is an actual survey of the property around the Community Center and Library down to Philadelphia, and where I have shaded this in sort of a beige, the library will be raised about 22 inches, so there'll be a ramp back down to the Community Center. The, where I've labeled new grades, which I don't know if you can see on your screen, this dark line shows the new grade, that's elevation 210. The proposed finished floor of the new library is about 211, so in effect, the existing grades will be piled up to the quote "new floodwall" about a foot. So you won't see a whole lot of difference in grade level from Philadelphia to the library, except in that last few feet where it will be graded up to the first two feet of the, of the library, which you'll see in a few minutes, will be a masonry, probably a brick, brick base to the library. The entrance to the library is right here, and so there'll be a little bit of grade change in this area because we want to make sure that you can go directly from the sidewalk into the library, and obviously, the door to the library has to be one foot above the 100-year floodplain, you don't want to open the library and have a problem. So that has not changed, although it has been moved up on the page, if you will, a little bit so that we're in as positive a location as possible with respect to the water level. So from a technical standpoint, that's really the conclusion. So the addition really has minimal impact. We probably are filling a little bit more than we thought, maybe another six inches. We're going to be raising the area around what I call the octagonal part of the building, and that will have to be raised at the same time, so it's the same level as the rest of the library. And because of the way the parking garage, the parking area under the new part of the library will be, it's done in a, a concrete slab that is post-tension, which when it was constructed, nobody really knows exactly what the, what those beams can support. And so we're not going to be simply putting more concrete on top of the octagonal area to raise that level. What we're proposing to do is to, in effect, raise the floor like a, like a computer floor, but rather than an actual computer floor, simply raise the finished floor so that there'll be a space between the existing slab and the new slab, under which you can run wiring and that sort of thing, and we have, we're trying to keep it lightweight. And so it'll probably simply be light gauge steel framing and, and a plywood floor and, but a complete finish, and so it'll be stiff so that it won't sound hollow. But that's the, what we need to do to make sure that all of the usable library space will be on one level. And as I said before, the paving adjacent to the entrance will need to be modified just a little bit, and the grading is to be slope up about a foot into the library. So those are really the major issues. There is perhaps a 70, $80,000 premium because of some of the calculations, not a significant one, but I think this, this last drawing really explains the big picture at this point after working with Ellen and her staff, and also understanding some of the functional areas. In green, you see the, the part where the octagonal area is. What I'm circling here is where the rec department is, I'm going to blow this up in a second. This is the game room. These are the new computer rooms. In tan, the library staff. In sort of a buff is the meeting room and restrooms, and the blue is basically the, the library proper. We're proposing because we've always wanted to create some sort of a nice pedestrian path along the parking. If you're getting out of your car and going to the entrance, you want to make sure that's a nice trip. If you're coming from Maple, or I'll call it the northward direction on the drawing, and you're coming down the sidewalk, and here's the bus stop, we'd like to peel a sidewalk off and kind of come into a seating area where people can gather, it would be outside the children's area. If in fact we can even put a door into that, that would be a nice thing to do. Once again, we have to make sure we are above the floodplain, we don't want a door that, that could leak, but we want to make sure there's a place for people to gather. It's the southern part of the building, and it would be a nice place to sit. It could take on a number of different shapes. We don't think that this area is going to be quite big enough, people certainly can gather, but it's not so huge that caregivers and, and folks with strollers and kids could sit outside, and it also could be a nice children's garden or a, a, a nice focus for some programs that might happen with the library. So you all received, I believe, a copy of the cost estimate. The last time I presented a cost estimate to you, I provided figures based on some historical figures of both libraries and what other jurisdictions are budgeting, in effect, almost per square foot for new construction. For instance, MCPS is telling us today, and we have two projects with them, to budget around $350 a square foot for any new construction that they're going to build. Within six months, that was way low, and that's been a problem, and many of our clients and their CIPs have had to be adjusted because of that. And frankly, it's for a couple of reasons, and this is in your packet as well, but I thought I'd blow this up, you may have gotten a chance to take a look at that, but quite frankly, the biggest impact on all of this is skilled trade and labor shortages have increased costs all over this area, 10 to 20%, which is a pretty significant amount. The tariffs on steel have already raised the cost of steel by 20%, and that happened a while ago. So we're finding that market conditions are driving construction costs today, it has nothing to do with inflation, because inflation is reasonably low. But quite frankly, because inflation is low and full employment, and the contractors who are cutting their prices in the last five- and the contractors who are cutting their prices in the last five years to ten years are now making up for lost time, and they're rubbing their fingers because when we're seeing bids, we're lucky to get three and four bids as opposed to six to ten that we used to get, because they're not as hungry as they were. And they're looking for projects that are both moneymakers and easier to construct. Renovation projects are not particularly advantageous to them because it just takes a lot more thought. And new construction is much more attractive to contractors. So luckily, you're, for the most part, new construction, easy to access. So from that standpoint, that's not a, not a problem. But I, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I have to be the bearer of honest news. And one of the things I've told the city manager is that I've been working with Danny Scott and their predecessor firm for almost thirty years. And they have not blown a budget yet, or budget, but blown an estimate yet. And what you'll find is that we'll start at a schematic level, which is basically they can sort of take off some of the architectural work because they can measure floor plans and walls. We get to the design development phase, and we're kind of in the early design development phase now. They can take off site when there's drawings. They can begin to take off mechanical and electrical work. They can take off more of the architectural because they have more detail. But in all cases, there is a, and this is how, this is simply a summary page, but they'll come up with what they think things would cost, then they'll put an escalation on it. They'll put a contingency for unknown scope because they haven't seen the drawings. And so you can see there is a considerable amount of money just in escalation. There's not quite twenty percent of funny money or money that they want to make sure that you know that things are in flux. So don't think of what a twenty-twenty, January of twenty-twenty number is. So we're at about three hundred and fifty-nine dollars right now, which quite frankly surprised me a little bit. I thought we might even be a little bit higher. We recently-
You mean by, by square foot?
By square foot, yeah. So we're kind of where I thought we might be. We even have some money in this estimate for asbestos. And I did talk to Darrell, and I guess there has been no asbestos study done. But we're, so we have, we'll probably recommend that one be done. But, so we're trying to be honest and to make sure that there are no surprises. As this progresses, quite frankly, the estimates gets more and more and more detailed. Some of this contingency, if not all of us, gets used by the end. But we're hoping not to use anymore. In response to how one cuts costs at this point, there are really two ways to do it. One is simply to cut square footage. And that's the easiest way. And that's the way most people cut costs at this phase. The other way is to understand that quality is the next element. And I'm talking about quality of the mechanical system, quality of the electrical system, and materials. Now, I'm talking about the difference between carpet and vinyl tile and let's say porcelain tile in a, you know, in a public area or terrazzo, which we used to all see in public buildings years ago. So there are lots of different levels of finishes. Now, for a public building, we always recommend that you plan on the building lasting for thirty to forty years and that we all know that most public jurisdictions don't really have enough money to maintain buildings very well. It's just life. And so we try to find and recommend materials that are long-lasting and as maintenance-free as possible. And we're also finding that mechanical engineers love all the bells and whistles of some of these mechanical systems. But most of our clients want an on-off switch that's highly energy-efficient but does not require a PhD to run the system. Now, our mechanical engineer has spent a day with John. We know that he's already replacing some of the units on the roof right now. And they're trying to integrate what we're proposing to do with what he's doing. We think that the big chiller outside can power this new building without buying a new chiller. We're looking at a very efficient rooftop called a variable air volume system that is what's, most people use in office buildings because the library has a very similar environment than an office building does. We looked at a very highly efficient system called a VRF, which we are sometimes using in some schools. It's a fairly expensive system, and it's very energy-efficient, but we're finding that it requires a great deal of maintenance. And it's proprietary. And when you need parts, you often have to go to Japan to get them, or Europe. And so we're not going to recommend that for, for your building. And we've gone through a lead scorecard. You're not really losing much of anything by going with the system we're talking about. So as this gets developed, we want to integrate with what you're doing here in the rest of the building. I don't think your maintenance staff needs two or three totally different systems to maintain. They need to be fairly simple. And I will be showing you, we've actually done a drawing illustrating how the mechanical system will be distributed. I think it's, I'll go down to this one. This is actually a drawing of showing on the roof, this will be one unit, and this will be the second unit. And this simply shows the duct work and where each one of the air registers would be in the ceiling. And this was to give the estimator an idea of the lineal feet and the size of duct work and the systems and the tonnage. So we've gone to the point where we know this all works. We're putting the mechanical systems on the roof far away from the perimeter, both so that it's not visually apparent and also because when you begin to put anything within ten feet of the edge of a roof, you need to put railings all around. That's something else you really don't want. And we also know that you want to continue the use of the photovoltaics on the roof. So we're trying to be efficient, put these in areas that are not noise-sensitive and that have walls and structure below so that you're not going to get a lot of vibration. So these are things that we're thinking about. I'm not going to make a presentation on a mechanical system, but I just want you to know that this is all being done with some knowledge of the kind of systems that we would use. We believe that we can operate and run the new building from your existing electrical service. We think you have enough, and you're not going to need something new. Although right over here, you see a transformer. We will need a transformer close to the building. And it may be, and I'm going to go back to, may need to be on that little island because we can't find a great location to put a transformer. You don't have that much property. And it needs to be close, or else the cost of taking the power from the transformer to an electric room gets higher and higher the farther away it goes. So you'd love to put these things outside the electrical room on the inside. So we're cognizant of the fact that budget's important, energy is important, operations are important, longevity is important. And so when we come back and we talk about things like finishes, we will be giving your staff options and materials and for ways of approaching things. So the decisions that will be made will be made by your staff. We'll simply be the resource to say, here are your options. And, you know, we've got to respect whatever budget you have. And we, we know that we're probably a little over your budget now, but we're going to do our best to work with folks to make sure that we rein in and that there is not additional funds. The big news here, though, is also in this plan. This is a highly flexible plan. You don't see any walls in the public library. And that's one of the things that we're finding in other libraries. Flexibility is the key. What we're showing here, this little wall or room, is in, is the children's room. The rest of it's adult, and there are young adults over here. So there are a couple of small group study or quiet study rooms where people can get together. There is the need for some security to contain the children. And I know in some libraries, up in Frederick County, for instance, you're not allowed in the children's area unless there's an adult, unless, an adult is not allowed unless you have a child with you. So there are issues that we simply need to realize. We try to make sure the library is secure without it being a parent. The key is to have your staff being able to monitor what's going on, see who's coming in and where they are. The staff, the circulation desk, which does not show up on this drawing. Maybe it does on the next one here. Oops. Oops, I'm going to go to the back one. Well, yes. Where your staff can actually see, most people, they can see between the stacks. They can see into the children. The children's area has a, a desk. The library's been set up so that the door is here, that you're going to have restrooms, a family restroom, and a program room that can be closed off after hours if you want. So that could be totally independent, and you still have restrooms. But the staff can monitor who's going in and out. One of the advantages, and we worked with Ellen's staff on this, and provided four different options in the same shape of the building. But they particularly liked where the children's area was because they can go directly from their area into the program room so that when there's story hour, you don't have kids sort of going all the way through the library and creating a commotion. They're excited, and it's an exciting thing. So one of the things we'll be doing is developing, you know, a nice entrance and a, and a way to, you know, create that sense of anticipation for kids. This wall doesn't need to be a solid wall, and we'll work with the staff there. It could be half-solid and half-glass so that if you're a parent and you have your child in the, in this room, you can see in, you can see what's going on, you can monitor. It's all part of that openness. And there's lots of glass. What you see over here is your mosaic wall. So, you know, we're trying to keep your mosaic wall. That becomes a solid wall, but there's glass around the perimeter. You're also going to see that they're solid. And once again, a young adult area. Now, obviously, when the young, young adults are not using this, other people will, and vice versa. So, but there's plenty of ways to monitor. New computer rooms. These are glass walls, so you can see right through all the computer rooms. So it would be an open facility, but it would be acoustically separate. Whoops, I'm sorry. The staff is here. There'd be a way for the staff to come in over here. One of the new things that we've done is we've rearranged, I'll go to this next, we've rearranged the rec department and taken these toilets that are here and turned them around to open to the main corridor. We're still coming back with some ideas because now you have these two toilets and these two toilets. And we're coming back with some ideas to see whether they could be gender-neutral, whether, and, and different options of how you could not lose the number of fixtures and still create some different ways of dealing with this. One of the things parenthetically that we're struggling with right now is we're doing a code analysis. And there was no code analysis that we could find in the drawings that were given for this building. We, I don't know why we didn't do this six months ago, but we call the architects, who tell us that they didn't have much, but they might have their electronic files. And so we're waiting to get those right now. And hopefully, there'll be a code analysis. But I can't figure out how the building got built with a few toilets that are here, especially with this auditorium. But the original drawings, if some of you know, have a, have a gymnasium on the other side, and there were tons of toilets. And so often, you count all the toilets and all the capacity, and they have to match. So there were probably many too more, too many toilets for the gym. But I'm a little bit nervous when we go to permit that they're going to be looking for additional toilets, but we'll know within a week. And that's some, that's a discussion we may need to have. Well, that's another option. But one of the things we did is we're trying to find a way that the rec department and the library need a conference room. So we found a way of actually cutting a corridor through and having a conference room that can be shared with the library and shared with the rec department. So we're just trying to do a little bit double duty. We're not touching the game room or the kitchen. So that's just a piece of information. So the last piece I'd like to talk to you about is a couple of weeks ago, we presented four different architectural solutions based on the same floor plan. Floor plan doesn't change, but the big issues are, what do you do at the entrance so that somebody knows where the quote "front door" is? And what do you do for the perimeter? We have basically a flat roof, and so we don't have a lot of ups and downs in the loop, on the roof. We need to keep that fairly constant. But we'll be playing with the ceiling, and so you'll still get some feeling of three dimensions. But the exterior becomes totally different. So unfortunately, I have four videos at the end, and they certainly worked this afternoon on my computer, but somehow on the network, they're not working. Hopefully, I can make them work again. So here's the first option. And the idea here, and this is always the entrance, right here in all the drawings, is your existing rec department, which is a tan brick. You may or may not remember that. The new building is red brick. And so one of the things is that we have a building that is not high. It's about sixteen feet high. And here is the entrance. This is the program room. These are the toilets. Obviously, they don't need any windows. So one of the things we're trying to do is explore ways of creating this sense of entrance, but then making the transition between the solid brick wall of the community center. And this is the, the staff area. This isn't all glass, but it looks visually porous. And so then we begin to express the horizontals as the curve goes around. At one time, this was all glass. Library wanted us to put more solid panels in, so from the inside, there are places to hang posters and to do things particularly in the room. As you go around the corner, this is still in the children's area. These are the two quiet study rooms. And we roar around to the mosaic and the lounge piece that then is a little bit higher and a little bit more in scale with a two-story existing building. This, we'd like to make a little bit higher, too, the meeting room, for obvious reasons. We don't want to be, seem too small. And we've also played a little bit with, could we maybe make the roof go up and down? This is not quite the arena theater, but you don't have a hundred and forty million dollars to you. But in any case, so I'm going to go through a series. This begins to give you a sense of what that imagery looks like from the parking lot. This then is straight-on in the parking lot, gives you a sense of the entrance. It's a low canopy so that these two brick elements are higher. Here are the solid elements, but we try to continue window-millions in a brick pattern so that the sense of horizontality wraps around. Here I am on, there's the bus stop to your, to your right, so you can get a sense of where you are from Philadelphia Avenue looking in. So at the curve, it's in the adult area, it's pretty green. You can begin to, whoops, I'm sorry. You can begin to see the mosaic and the lounge. Okay? And so here's the second option. I'm going to go through all four of them and come back, and you're going to see comparisons as we get to the end. In this case, we said, you know, we don't really need all those horizontals. What happens if we just make a glass box? It's probably a little bit less expensive. Once again, it does not, it's just basically a much more open feeling. You can see, and this was the case in the first one, too, the flood level is up at this point. A slightly different kind of an entrance. I'm going to keep walking around. All right? And then we said, well, what happens if we begin to do something a little bit more dramatic for the entrance? Where we have the brick of the community center, let's continue that brick. And rather than having brick void, brick at the entrance, and then void again, or glass, let's continue the sense of brick and weave that cornice and pop up an entrance. We have a higher program room. You're going to see that we popped another piece up a little bit- You're gonna see that we popped another piece up a little bit into the library. We begin to wrap the glass around. We then actually put a frame around your mosaic and then we repeat that sort of idea at the lounge. We've added a little bit more brick as we've gone around here. It's not as articulated as the first, it's much more simple, but we've woven more brick into the we, our frame is not only a frame, but boy, let's put some more color in this thing to really make something a little bit more exciting. And here is the lounge. Okay? And so here are some of the options. We actually combined two, so we're back down to three. Where the first one with a lot more horizontals and a, an entrance that had some curvature as it goes up, a more straightforward entrance to a more articulated entrance. You can begin to see slightly different ways from going from the solid community center. So solid, void, solid, void, to down here where we continue the solid and we only break out of the solid after the community, or the program room. But we basically make the library a glass box to one where, you know, there's more masonry or more glass. This one started out to be all glass, but after we showed this, they said, well, can you put some more masonry back in here? But we then wanted at least have a different color brick or something to accentuate the sense of horizontality as the curve goes around. So, and some different ways for the mosaic. One, we simply put a cap on it, sort of repeating the cap of the building. Here, we just let the glass go right over it and it simply appears as a plane. And here, we accentuate it by making it, putting a frame around it, whether that's yellow or white or blue or purple, doesn't really matter at this point. You can begin to see the differences here. I'm gonna keep going now. This is the first of the videos. This is the one that we've had most problems with. Let me see, it might work. Like I said, it certainly worked like a champ on my computer at the office, but it's not working here for some reason. All right, guys. I might go to the next one, just in case. Yeah, you could read very well. Not sure. I'm gonna try to just hit the cursor, maybe that'll make it go. He was really going pretty fast. They're fairly large files, they're MP4 files, so I'm but we downloaded them very easily and just for some reason, it's not working in your system here.
Yeah, we both have them posted on the website so that people can go to them and look at them.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
So I don't think you need to do it right here.
All right, well, anyway, that was the, that was the eye candy, I guess. See, just in case. Yeah, it's not working either and I don't know why. Anyway, so that's kind of where we are and so we have continued to, I'm sorry. We've continued to explore the floor plan. We've gotten to the point where we're pretty sure we have done a new calculation. Ellen had her staff count every single shelf of books. We've made sure that we have provided not only that many, but more. And so the plan seems to be pretty set. We have a grading plan. The next step, to be quite honest with you, is for the civil engineers to finish the site plan and to submit it to Montgomery County, or to you folks to get a that's the only time the flood control folks, and you met him a couple of months ago, will actually pass final, final judgment and simply accept it. But he had accepted what we were doing, so I don't know why he wouldn't. So, we believe that if we can submit this in March, that we can have a site permit by September. Which is actually, if I can, which is kind of the last step, that we'll be finishing what we call design development in the next couple of months. Get an updated estimate in May. Finish the documents over the summer, to September. And you should be ready to go out to bid in the fall. And you could begin to construct this time next year. So that's a big picture. It's all dependent, obviously, on getting these things submitted. There was discussion about, a rather lively discussion when we showed the different renderings to your staff. And we didn't ask for a vote, there were things that people
Yeah, there was, there was some, yeah, there were definitely opinions.
So, the next step, obviously, we can't really get into some of the design development until we get a better sense of a direction from whoever on what this building should look like. And it could be door number four that you haven't seen yet. But we wanted to at least begin to explore, here's the massing of the building. And here are some of the things we need to be able to do. And so what it seems at this point is that people want sunlight to come in, we want this to be a healthy building. We want people to see into the building and say, what's in there? Let's go find out, it looks exciting, let's go use it. We want people inside to be able to sit and contemplate the view from the outside. From the inside into the outside. We want it to be, we want enough solid so that it's efficient. And there are some spaces, obviously, restrooms and others that don't need windows. So, we want a nice balance between them. And there are some that thought some of the glazing options looked too commercial. Others thought they looked just fine because they don't like a lot of lines. So, you know, I'm expecting, let's see, there are four, seven of you, eight of you. I assume there are eight opinions, but that's typical. So, ultimately, we'd like to get some input and we're establish a process to get input.
I'd like to speak to this. So, there's going to be some points where, you know, obviously, you'll be getting a little bit more information and want to now that we, now that we've got the first cost information, we really can start working on the details of that. And I think that that's, that's gonna be something that we'll be keeping, having a lot of discussion with you about. For the idea of kind of what the exterior looks like, I don't think there's significant, there's really big differences in terms of cost. That would be a piece of information that we should add, but
Not significant. The glass, glass today is running sixty-five to eighty dollars a square foot. Masonry, about half that.
Okay. So, the, you know, it is we had looked from the, as we were looking at kind of the usage on the inside, you know, there really was a lot of discussion about wanting to have not too much openness in the, in the rooms where you're going for a group meeting. And as, as Mr. Luthmeyer mentioned, you know, especially in the program, in the children's area, you do wanna have some solid walls for some of the, the different things, posters and things that they put up. The, there's a couple differences, I think, about how much, maybe how much light and heat come in. That some of the more horizontal things have a little bit more control perhaps about that. But as, as we as staff were looking at these, there were, there were some pros and cons to some of these different options. And it seemed like it'd be really nice to share that information with the public, get some feedback about what kinds of things, like is there, you know. I will tell you, the area that was the most controversial was the, was the yellow border around the mosaic. Most people did not care for that. But, you know, put, put some of this information out, share it with the public and then, and then have that come back. Obviously, you can't just pick one from one and one from the other. There's gotta, ultimately, there has to be a decision about how it comes together. But it'd be really nice to get that, to get your opinion about it. And I guess Greg, the part of the question is, when do you need that? Before, at what point does that make a real difference in the cost estimate and in moving forward? And so we'll work, we can work with you on that too.
The estimator took sort of a common denominator of all three, sort of midpoint. I don't think there's a huge amount of difference, to be quite honest with you. The idea of the, where there's more horizontals, there could be more sun shades. And also, it simply was really an expression of the fact that you have a very horizontal building. And sometimes that's kind of fun to, to you know, to make that happen. There is some people that thought this middle one looked a little bit too much like a store, you know, a commercial property.
Or an office building or something.
And so the weaving, I think, of brick and glass does help to tie this into the rest of the building. You know, the, both of these, we simply, not totally arbitrarily, said, well, we, we could make the group study rooms, which could have been shifted, solid and put windows in them so that there's a little bit more privacy and you're not, if you're doing a project together, you don't want people looking in perhaps, or you want a little bit more privacy. But it also gave a place to begin to introduce more masonry, more red, if you will, into the building.
One of the things that this doesn't show, but is an issue, is making sure that the landscaping and stuff doesn't allow people just to come up and like knock on the window. I mean, there's a certain part where you do wanna be kept back a little bit from, from the window.
Right.
The other thing is the, you know, there was a question, well, where do we put the sign that says, this is the library? So, you know, there's, there's other kinds of things to look at.
Right. You can see in this one, we actually put the library here. Could have been here, could have been out of the street. But that's something that gets developed as the process moves on.
You know, I think the, the other thing is that since we just got some of these numbers, literally last night, I need to also look carefully at what it means for some of the other costs that are related to the library. There's the cost of moving the books and, and the cost of the design, put all that together for, for me, as I'm looking at a proposed budget and for you, as we're looking at the details. And so we've, we've got work to do on this. But we want to make sure that this is a back and forth process with the council so that there's no surprises. I mean, there's always surprises, but you know of the surprises and what the opportunities are in some of these places and what some people's preferences are, all of which I think come to add up to an exciting project. And so, the, if, if the schedule were to continue, this, you know, the very longest would be that it would come back in May to you with revised cost estimates. And it's, that starts to get to the point of kind of a go or no-go about going out to bid. And then obviously, if we go out to bid and you get the bids and you say, oh my God, that's another go-no-go point for the council.
Right. And one of the things we could do, and I, and I can't tell you what they would be right now, is we often put alternates in a set of drawings.
Right.
So that if we can find two things to do the same thing, you know, example, a metal roof versus an asphalt shingle roof, there's a huge difference in price. There are projects where that becomes an alternate and the contractor gives you two different prices. Here you have a flat roof, so the roof is not one of those things. But we would develop some alternates as we go along as well, simply to hedge your bet a little bit.
Right. This, the plan that you're looking, and I'm assuming the cost estimates include the work in the rec department, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, that's something that has not been traditionally included as part of the, the library total cost. It can be done later, that, a portion of that could be done later. A portion of that could be done with different kinds of funds, not library funds. The toilet rooms need to be done. And so that's, that is in the main hallway of this building to make this all work. And so, that's, it makes sense to accomplish this all at one time, but it doesn't have to necessarily be that. So that's another thing, as we are looking at these various options, we'll be looking at that.
Is it easy, I, since we just got the cost estimates today, I wasn't able to really dig into it. Is it possible to pull out the rec from the cost estimates we got?
It's about five hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Okay. So, I just wanna be clear before we open it up for everybody, like what, because we're not making, we promised no decisions tonight. What, what is the process moving forward? So, we're gonna take some time to look at the cost estimates.
To me, this, this has to even sink into me.
Yeah.
So there's that. I appreciate, you know, always knowing this information, but, but I also have to think about it. I think we're gonna think about it in a couple different ways. I want you all to have questions and you'll have some tonight, but as they come up, I'd like to know them. I know Councilwoman DeBala forwarded residents' comments on the Silver Spring Library, things that she didn't like there that she has of interest. So there will be different kinds of points that we can look at. The other thing is not only the cost, but the timing of this work and how that is vis-à-vis other work that goes in this building and other expenses that happen. So I need to kind of be thinking through those kinds of things. When moving would happen of the library. You know, we, we still believe that we will have a location at no charge to us for an alternate space for the library, or at least for the storage of the books. So that's good. But, you know, we also need to put in a Plan B in case that doesn't work. And so, all of this is to, to try to, to think it out. I think, I don't even know exactly when it should come back to you before May. Certainly will be discussed during budget, but, but if there's a particular point as you're thinking about it or as we have the discussion tonight, that this comes back to you, happy to do that.
Great. Can, can I just ask a quick clarifying question on that? So, if I'm remembering right, we authorized three hundred thousand from, now it's working?
Yeah.
You shouldn't have said anything. Right, so this also has to come, this also has to come back to either continue the contract with Mr. Luthmeyer or not.
And, and what's the timing on that? Is, is the three hundred thousand through May, the work through May?
In effect, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that, so just to be crystal clear on that, what, so what is that, what is the work between now and May?
It's called design development. By then, we would have the site plan submitted. You'd have enough of the drawings so that establishes really the, both the character and the scope of the entire project. You'd have mechanical drawings, electrical drawings, structural drawings, to a point of about a sixty-five percent completion of actual bid documents.
Okay, so that's what we have through May. And just thinking about process, and I don't wanna put the cart before the horse and anything, but as we go through, you said one of the ways to cut costs is cutting square footage.
Yes.
When does that type of decision need to be made?
I recommend it being made as soon as you can.
What's the latest that could be made?
I'd like to say in about a month. We can't make a whole lot of progress and neither can the site plan people if the shape of the building or the size of the building changes. Makes a big difference for them.
And so when we, do we already have those options? Or when would you be able to, to show us what those options are if cutting square foot was an option that we wanted to consider?
Well, if you simply, I mean, I'm not sure I would be the person to tell you if they're options. The issue is if you say, gee, if every square foot is in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, you don't get all that back. You say, gee, I wanna save a half a million dollars. We figure out how many square feet needs to come out of the building. And then we say, well, here's a new design showing how that would work.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we don't, even this is not a big library. So if you're cutting back, that does mean fewer books. It does mean, you know, fewer, smaller, some smaller program rooms, some smaller space. And that's fine. But there was a charge to us to maintain the same number of books as we currently have and something that was part of the scope at the original part of this. And so the council And so the council certainly can change their mind on that. So, you know, and then I think the other question, the other option is, is reducing some of the quality of the finishes, some of the quality of the materials. I want a durable building. I'm not claiming, I really don't want to like that. We, we use our buildings.
Yeah.
We use our buildings really hard. And so it's not to say, and I, and I want it attractive. One of the things that's really important for a public building is that it's physically attractive. It doesn't have to be gilded, but it has to be physically attractive so people are proud of it. It, it makes just a real difference. If you're investing this kind of money, the difference in that about having quality finishes is, is important. Doesn't mean you can't choose a tile versus something else, and I'm, I'm always happy to do that. But I want to be really careful about what, what is chosen.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily advocating at this point to shrink it at all. I just wanted to kind of have a sense of, as we're going through the numbers, when that would come up, so. Councilwoman Sears?
Quick question. So how many square feet are currently identified as like rec-related space?
Same space that, pretty much that they have right now.
That they have right now.
Yeah, it's just what it, so what it does is it reorganizes the office. It gives them some cubicles, more than, than the office space that they have. It also opens their customer service window to the main hallway, which is a huge improvement.
Here, you can see that here. Here's the window and here's that skinny little corridor.
That's the current one. And that's just really uncomfortable. We can't, we really can't serve patrons well there. And so what it does is it moves it to, right inside that second set of doors, to a nice open window in the larger hallway. So it's, it's much easier to have people register for classes there or to, to get that kind of assistance.
I guess the reason I'm asking is, you know, and I haven't had a chance to kind of revisit some of the prior, you know, funding documentation. So I know that we have the bond, bond funds for the purpose of the library.
That's right.
We're adding on rec. Have we tried to get any other resources towards like infrastructural improvements related to recreational services, which would be different from the library? So if we're thinking about the cost, then the square footage, I, I wouldn't, I actually think there are a lot of efficiencies associated with tying it into this construction project because it's just cheaper to do. But I'm trying to compartmentalize it in my brain such that if we need to start thinking about alternative, external ways of getting resources devoted to the rec portion of the project.
We've not, we have not done that. I will say that the, the terms of the library bond were written broadly. So it's library and other community center structure needs. So that, I did not want to, if for some reason this didn't go forward, I didn't want to lose those funds and some flexibility with those funds. So I made sure that the, that the, that the bond language was broader. That doesn't mean that that wasn't, the intention though was for the library and I don't want to play with that, but I did write it so that it was, you know, we did ask for it to be broader language. I think it would be great to go after recreation funds. I also think it's a great tax duplication argument that, you know, they're not paying, the county is not paying the full amount that we should be getting for recreation services. And maybe this is a good place to say, well, we may not get this completely in the formula, but gee, this would be a great contribution.
A great grant, yeah, thank you.
Great. And I may be misremembering, but didn't we think we'd also pay, have some cable money that?
Yes, we absolutely, we have cable money that can be used for a lot of this.
Yeah.
Not for recreation, though. I would use that for, more for the lounge and for all of the, a lot of the computer area and things that, and the program room where there's a tie to AV services.
Okay, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you and thanks for the presentation. I, I guess I saw this meeting as being one where we would take into account some of the cost information and then be able to signal what direction we hope you go in the design. I think because the data came in later, I mean, we, I think it only came in right before the meeting, so I haven't really had a chance to, to look at it and nor has anyone else. So I feel a little bit like we need another session for the public to be able to do that before the May time. That's number one.
Oh, absolutely.
I think so.
But, but I, I guess I would say a few initial questions. One, so on the, just the summary page of the project hard construction cost, so it's broken into three categories, which is addition, which is the, all the new construction, I believe, right? Renovation, which is fixing up the old part, which I guess includes the rec center. And then site work, so what's included in site work? Is that permitting and things of that nature or is it?
No, no, no.
Site preparation?
It's the site preparation, it's the demolition of the building. I'm going to tell you what page that's on, if you can. If, it's on page eight, I'm sorry, six and seven, which are the last two pages. Or, no, they're not the last two. But includes any landscaping, any asphalt work, bringing in the fill under the library.
Okay, okay.
Water line.
So that's all those things you have to do before any new construction would occur?
Yeah, fire hydrant, sanitary sewer.
And so where do those other things, like what we're paying you now for the design, getting the permitting, if there's a construction manager, all those things, is that separate?
Those don't appear. These is only the hard construction costs. This is what you might expect the contractor to tell you he will build the building for.
But so the.
To that, you have to add soft costs.
Right. But so the, the design payments come out of the bond money at the moment, right? I mean, is that how to look at it?
Yeah, so I need, so one of the things I didn't have time to present to you was kind of the full cost estimates that we had before.
Yeah.
Which include, which I don't see changing significantly, which are the design costs. There's the moving costs. There's, also, there's other things that have been outlined before, permit costs and things. One of the things that's really helpful in the cost estimator is all the things it doesn't cover. It lists in a very, two pages of things it doesn't cover. And so it's furniture, it's a variety of things that aren't in the hard costs. And so all of that, we had estimates before. I'd like to revisit them, but, but I don't see a lot of change to those and they will be shared with you.
I guess, so from my perspective, and, you know, we'll get that information, but without having that now, I, I don't feel like I'm in a position to say we should go forward with this because we just don't know what the cost is. I mean, at a minimum, to me, you know, I mean, it's, it's harder to, as mu, as great as it would be to have the recreation piece, it's hard for me to justify having that, given where we are. But, you know, I think I'd like to see what all those other costs are before we decide. But I guess what they don't want to have us do is, you know, have the whole rest of this current phase of design contract go forward and have you do all that work when we still haven't had a chance to get all of that figured out and.
I can't, I can get it to you in a week.
We're not, Mr. Luke Meyer is not moving forward until, yeah, and he understands that and we're, and, but we did not have the information to make a decision tonight. So nothing's happening in a week, it comes back to us again.
Right, that's, that's fine, but I guess what I'm saying, that means, so further, more detailed design work through the current contract will, are you saying wouldn't go forward?
No, I'm saying it, I, in my view, it should, needs to continue. It's, it's working on the things that are, you know, have been described, but I will get the other information to you very shortly. You've had it before, I just didn't have it tonight.
Right, but.
And I, and I'm happy to bring this back quickly. You can work with the mayor about how quickly this comes back. But, you know, I also think we have to, I mean, that, there is a judgment call, too, about what does it do to cost to wait and to do things? And, and that's something that we also have to weigh.
Well, I, I just think that we need to, I, I don't feel comfortable with the idea of just continuing with this current phase until we have a better handle on what we're talking about. And I'm not saying just go home and don't do, do anything. But the purpose of this midpoint, or whatever you want to call it, check in that we're doing now, was to understand the costs and then we can decide. I don't even know, I mean, what if it turns out that after we see the costs, we all think we should skip the rec part? I'm not saying that will happen. I'm not even saying I'll do that. But we don't know. And I don't know if you get another month's worth of design on that and then we say, oh, by the way, don't do the rec piece. That just seems to put you and us in a bad position.
Yeah, we're, what we would be concentrating on right now are the things that would not change. For instance, we can't deal with the exterior at this point. We need to go through the co, the code analysis issue, the issue with the toilets and that sort of thing. We're setting up drawings right now. We actually have to redraw the gra, the underground floor so that everybody understands how all this works together. So it's really just the, the setting up the drawings at this point. The biggest issue to me is whether in fact you want the civil engineer to continue to get going with a site plan submission. That has no impact whatsoever, let's say, on the rec department. But it would have an impact if you said, gee, take 2,000 square feet out of the building and take a 10-foot swath out of, you know, the curb. So, you know, we, we can stand down for some period of time, it's really up to you.
Well, I mean, I think it depends on when we have the information. I don't know what other people think.
I can send it tomorrow. I mean, seriously, just have not.
Right, but I think we want the public to have an opportunity to weigh in on it.
Yes, I understand. And, and it has been, it's the same information that was presented before, but I certainly appreciate the, the need to have it as all part of the same discussion.
So, so on Friday mornings, the city manager, myself and the city clerk sit down and do our agenda meetings. So I, I would think you're not going to get much work done in the next 72 hours. So why don't we have the city manager send out the additional information? We'll sit down with the agenda meeting, look at what's coming up. We do have the budget coming up soon and other things. And then talk to Mr. Luke Meyer again about his schedule. And then we can report back to council next Wednesday with a firmer schedule and decision points moving forward.
That's good.
Is that good? Uh, Councilwoman.
One other question, I'm sorry. So for the contingency amounts, escalation to construction midpoint is 7.25% and then the general design contingency estimate for unknown scope? And those add up to 17% or it looks like 1.2 million dollars or something like that. So typically, how much of that, I mean, especially with what you just described about the, the, the construction sector and the economy and all the increases we're seeing, do you normally see at this stage that most of that would end up being absorbed, especially when we have low unemployment and these other things?
I would probably say the, the majority of it would be. Certainly, the escalation is an estimate based on both what the federal government has established and what these estimators who actually work for contractors on bid day are seeing what's going on. They have a better crystal ball than we do, but obviously they're not infallible. But they, they can see what's going on. The, the contingency, what I'll call the design contingency, is important to them because estimators and mathematicians, they actually measure everything that's on a drawing. And so all they're going to tell me is, when I've measured all this stuff, this is what it costs. If you're going to give me a bunch of drawings in two months, I'm going to remeasure or, because right now I'm just putting an allowance in for what I think you might come up with because we worked together for a long time and they kind of know what we do. So things like the structure, well, I don't really have any structural drawings. So they don't know sizes and how many beams and that sort of thing. Ultimately, they will count every one and they'll weigh it because you buy steel by the ton. So that's why we take estimates at schematics, design development, construction documents. You know, each time we update and update, and each time there's a go-no-go or there's a, do we need to value engineer? Do we need to cut back? What do we need to do? So it's important that you don't have any surprises on bid day and it's important that we don't have any surprises on bid day. So I want to be totally open and that's why we have these folks as part of the team.
I assume the longer you went out, like you said, if everything fell into place, construction could start in about a year. If for whatever reason it took an extra six months, more of this contingency is probably going to tend to get absorbed unless the economy changes in some unpredictable way.
And sometimes you never know.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman DeBala.
Yeah, thank you for all of this and especially not having all the complete information yourself until less than 24 hours ago. That said, I really do appreciate getting more details next, by next Wednesday on costs. Any sense of where you see adjustments that could potentially be made? And also how you see a process for residents, the council and the staff to, to come to terms on these three design options as quickly as possible because that's a, a request of the architect. And I, it's not clear to me how we do that, but I'm sure you've got a, you'll think of something. Yeah. On the information you presented tonight, I have a lot of specific questions that I will just write down. But I do have a couple of more general questions. You referred to having run through a lead scorecard and I would be interested to see, to see that. Again, not right now, but I.
Right.
I would personally like to see that.
No, it's good.
To see what the, what the choices are. Because I've had a number of residents who are more knowledgeable than I do in that area make suggestions. And given that this is attaching to an existing building, not every suggestion is going to work out. So I would really like to see that.
Yeah, there are a bunch of things about the lead scorecard that neither one of us has any control over. For instance, you get a lot of points because of where the building is and whether it's on bus lines and whether there are so many different kinds of commercial establishments within a quarter of a mile away. So, you know, we collectively can control things like energy use, but, but we'll get you that within the week.
Yeah, so to be more specific, I'm, I'm interested in the building-specific choices. And the, you showed the schematic of the HVA system and where different things would go. So that's one thing. You, you talked about the connecting of the library to the existing building. And you said that the octagon area would, would be raised. So at some point, there's got to be a transition of something like 22 inches.
Right now, we're showing that transition in this ramp right here. And this is the octagon area. And so if that were to be, some of this can stay, actually, the octagon area is right here, sorry. This doesn't get changed. The rec department and the game room, that, that doesn't get changed. So it's this area in here. So we had two options. If this area was the same level as the rest of the community center, we would need a ramp from the staff area into the library. It's an option. Maybe not a great option, but it's the book trucks that go down the ramp. Otherwise, we know that most people would simply then go uphill on this little ramp right here. It's about a 20-foot-long ramp at a heady cap slope.
And, and one reason I raise it is because of the question of cost. And if one of those two options is significantly more than the other, then I'd be interested to hear a little more about those two choices. Understanding that the program. Understanding that the staff area with a ramp and, and stairs, with a ramp might not be the best solution. But if there's a significant cost difference between.
It would be less expensive.
Putting in all the steel, I'd like, I'd like to, to see that.
Yeah, it would be less expensive if the ramp went from this tan area into the blue area over here. And we could come up with a, a design and get with Ellen and see whether it works. Sure, that's not, it's a good suggestion, actually.
I have one more, hang on just a second. And I'm just not remembering, this is, maybe I'm the only one. The, the first green room, the so-called lounge.
This one right here?
And it bumps out.
Yes.
So remind me what that room is intended for, what it is now?
It doesn't exist now.
It's over the parking lot. It's the area, yeah.
The parking lot is open. This whole area right here is open. So it spans.
Thank you, that's why I'm having trouble placing it.
This is your last existing conference room.
That's the hydrant room there.
Right here. And then they, now you go outside. And then they now you go outside and walk up.
So the so that green lounge room is intended to be part of the rec?
No, but it's so it's not going to count as part so there's a technical reason it's not counting as part of the library and that's because it's not built to withstand the weight of books.
Okay.
And so it would not be a location for books, but one of the things that there is a very strong need for is a an area where people come with their computers or they come with their kids and they can have we can have programs. It's a great location for a variety of events that might happen, but right now we just, you know, we have very few big rectangular rooms. And this is one where the kind of use of people who come to the to the library area, we get people sitting like in the hallways to use Wi-Fi and that kind of so this is an area that was asked for as we went through the whole library discussion of just kind of an unprogrammed area. I could see it having a little coffee bar thing or vending machines. I could see it having interesting seating. I could see it being used for audiovisual activities and, you know, I remember we were trying to have one of the green fests and we just didn't have enough room to show off neat green equipment that you could buy, you know? So it's that was the point of that. It's it's not a necessity for the library, but it was one of the things that as we were talking about the library kept coming up was that there wasn't that kind of space. This this particular space also has an advantage of the library is closed and you still want to use Wi-Fi and you still want to do something that you that's a room that could be used for that.
So the reason that I bring it up and maybe I'm misguided is the question about whether it costs a lot to bump out and go back in again as opposed to a straight line of building. So I'm not trying to deny anybody any room that's that was in the plan. I'm just asking a question about costs of various construction options.
Right now, there's a walkway where my cursor is that goes around here. And so frankly, the idea is that it's simply it's a bridge, if you will, and whether it lined up with this wall or not, to be honest with you, when we get more detail, it probably would. So so you're basically building a bridge across this area to get some space.
Yeah, and that's my question. So I'm assuming building building over empty space and building a bridge to hold a room is going to cost and so if it's if it's looking at the map as it is now, it goes out past the on the east or the right side, past the library. It's a is there a significant cost difference in paying for that extra square foot as opposed to extra square foot somewhere else in the bulk of the library? So it's I don't know. That's why I'm asking you.
From a structural standpoint, it's a freestanding structure. So if it weren't there and that was still a hole down to the parking below, the rest of it still works. The rest of the library still works.
So we could look at the cost of that. I would I would point out.
Not making it disappear, but making making it level if that makes a difference. I don't know if it does.
No, it's a good it's a good question, but I will I want to remind people that one of the things that if you're going past the hydrangea room right now, you can't just go straight into the library and the because it goes outside. And so partly, there would have to be something there just so you recognize so that you can go straight into the library. One of the biggest complaints about the library is you do this jogging thing to get into it. And so there would be something there. How that gets changed around is is certainly an open question.
Thank you.
At the probably at the very least, you would need a wall that goes down here, simply so that you can get from this desk area straight into the library.
Did you want to follow up on that?
Oh, just one question. It would be nice to have what it would cost if we just didn't have that.
Yeah.
Well, no, that I wanted to supplement what Cindy was asking and just say, since that's freestanding, that has always struck me as the one thing, not that it wouldn't be great to have that, but as the one thing that could easily be removed and still the rest would have the same integrity.
I mean, it is a candidate even for an alternate. If it were drawn as as something that was totally independent, that the contractor could not build and you'd get an actual price for that as something either to add or not add.
But it would be nice just to have that too. Thank you. What that would cost.
And I'm sorry to jump in line, but I just want to make sure that that I understand what level of decision-making we need to be preparing to make. So is it easier for us to to come back to you and be able to say at 300 and what is it, 306, 300 and whatever it is a square foot, we currently have enough resources for X millions of dollars, seven, right? You've given us a bid that would to your best ability depict exactly what it is as close as possible to what we want. And then if we decide, you know what, that extra mil is not something we're able to to squeeze out of the budget, we need to cut things down by half a mil. We just decide, okay, what what does that mean in terms of back-dooring in the reduction in the number of square feet based on the price?
So what I what I would want to give you is, first of all, obviously, there were other revenue funds. There's over a million, almost, I think, almost $2 million of of cable monies. There's some other fun funds that we can use. I would like to and that's been identified before, provide that information, provide the extra kind of soft costs that aren't in the cost estimators list that we have, show that to you. And I can, as working with Greg, come up with a couple of of these alternate ideas with some numbers. And so to me, what's important is it's, I mean, I'm not the one to make this choice. I just want to be clear, but I can give you some recommendations based on what I think works well with the funds that we have. And here's the kind of options that you might want to consider to say, you know what, yes, let's go with this, let's wait on the rec department. Yes, let's go with this, let's not build out the lounge or put that as an alternate. You know, so I think there's a couple of things here that that could be provided. There might be some things that say, you know, if as we use the contingency, if we save 500,000, great, then we've got something that we can spend it on.
Okay.
So I'd like to provide that kind of a list of options for you.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I just want to make sure that I'm that we're not trying to now join in something into it because that's not where we are right now.
Like I said, we did, we just got these numbers and we got to think about it.
All right. So so it's 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 about the matter of getting the numbers of the budget.
Right.
And then if we have any initial thoughts around the exterior items, the exterior design items, sharing those, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Kostic.
Thank you very much. I, first of all, I really think we need that information and that will be really, really useful. And I'd like that to also include the soft cost estimates and any changes to those that have been made since the original discussion. And I'd like I'd like to see if we can move forward relatively quickly because I'm just looking back at the timeline on this. The the community engagement happened like six years ago and we've done, you know, since I've been elected, I think we've had a couple of work sessions on this, but there really hasn't been any movement on it. So I think there are, you know, time is ticking along and we have an aging library and I'd like to see us have an opportunity to move forward on that sooner rather than later. One question I had looking back was you said that the rec costs and estimates were not included previously. Were those were those a part of the 2016 and the two and the earlier, the estimates last year? Were those a part of that or not?
So in the in one of the previous meetings, we identified them, but it was this kind of a as a side note.
If you're looking at this presentation from July, they were included.
They were mentioned there.
They were in the one in July, okay.
Right, but but that was so one of the things that I didn't like was that, you know, that was information to share with you, but we had not had a discussion at that point about should we do anything with the rec department? And so I, you know, I would have liked to have had that, but but it certainly was mentioned. I believe it makes sense to do at least as part of this project or phase that in as part of this project because taking advantage of the efficiencies of construction. Nevertheless, we need to get more information to you and I think we're finding that now.
And can I you probably let me just follow up on that real quick. You probably don't know now, but I'd be interested in knowing whether those were a part of the original estimates when I was looking back to 2016 or not. I'm just trying to get a sense of like where that.
No, I don't think they were. I do not, I don't think they were.
I think 2016, we were simply renovating the library.
Right. Yeah, so it was so 2016, so when councilmember Kovar and councilmember Kareshi came on the city council the very first month, we changed directions with this project. Prior to that, it was a smaller project on renovating the library. Then the new council came in and it was decided in that January to hit the pause button and to go back and look at what a large, basically a larger project. And that's what Mr. Luke Meyer did for us at that point, so.
Yeah, I just I'm trying to compare and and looking at like the the increase that we had from July to now and trying to understand if that included or didn't include the rec department.
It did have it did have some rec it did have some rec department numbers.
Sorry, councilmember DiBala, did you want to ask something?
I did I I'm looking at the table from the July 2019 and so what's what's I think what's tripping me up is that the estimate is about that we got today is about new construction costs and we've all been talking about 7.5 million, which it did include some other things. It did include the rec department. The new construction estimate alone was 6.9 million, not 7.5. So that that might be why we're having a little trouble with where did the rec go? Because most of the difference is the rec is the rec money.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, yes, so I think there are still a lot of outstanding questions about the the costs that'll be useful to take a look at and and the options. In terms of square footage, is the square footage of this proposed project the same as we've kind of been talking about along the way?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That hasn't changed.
Since January 26th, yeah.
That's correct.
Just reminding everybody what happened here.
Yeah, I mean, this really represents sort of the maximum you could fit on this site. And and based on, you know, where your the major trees are and what's reasonable. So that's always been all right, this is about how far you can stretch the library and this is about how big it can be. It's not a scientific, gee, you needed exactly this.
Okay.
I think my original program said you needed someplace between, I think it was 16 and 20,000 square feet. So it was a range.
Okay. Great. Yeah, and I'd be curious if there's any if library staff can provide any thoughts on square footage impacts and what what they need in terms of their programming and books and those sorts of things. So I have two just general opinions on the design. Why not? One is I very much liked the idea you mentioned of a door with access to the children's section. A, because it would provide access for people who are walking into the building because otherwise I think it becomes a building that's very driver-oriented with everyone entering from the parking lot. And B, because a lot of families with children gather before the library opens for circle time in the mornings and you have strollers kind of gathered all around, little kids running around. And I think having I love the idea of having that little plaza area where people could do that instead of having them be right next to the parking lot with cars. And then in terms of the different options, I personally don't like the first one very much. I think it looks a little retro, but I like the other two. And I like the yellow the yellow box, but I may be the only one.
Ooh, you're going to get emails now.
I am, I am.
I'd like the box if it weren't yellow, but I agree with you on one, I'm not a fan.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Siemens.
Well, thank you, mayor. And I'm glad that councilmember Kostic preceded me, so I won't mention my preferred option. But anyways, I I just wanted to say that I I really appreciate the way that the design has evolved and I think I see a lot of improvements this time over the previous presentation. I really I really appreciate the the changes you're proposing in the recreation department, especially because it makes a far better use of the space that we that we have and it addresses some of the issues that that we have such a storage space that is a an oversight in the previous design of the community center. I I look forward to, you know, some of the cost comparisons on some of this stuff, but for right now, costs aside, I like the design.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, sorry, I have two more things. Really quickly, a a stroller parking area, either outside or inside, would be really useful. And I forgot the other one, but it's I can email you. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. So I just want to say I want to echo councilwoman Kostic's views on this. I also do want to move this forward because when we started this project, my kids spent a lot of time in the library and now one's in college and I'd like this done before I have actually grandchildren that I'm taking to the library. So I do want to move this forward quickly. And if since we're putting in what we liked in the design options, I lean towards two. Actually, there's something about three that I actually dislike, so I'm not sure exactly what it is about it, but I lean towards two right now, so.
May I give him a hint?
Yeah.
I'm kind of a retro guy.
Yep.
Imagine that.
Councilman DiBala?
Yeah, we enjoyed the 60s.
I liked two and three.
All right. So I think for the moment, we just want to thank you again for coming back. I really appreciate this. It's very exciting to get into this point. And yeah, we'll dig into the numbers, work with the city manager to get stuff out to the council and you'll hear from us very soon.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much and thank you to Ellen and to everyone who's working on this project.
And I want to compliment, Mr. Luke Meyer is really good to work with. I've appreciated the the responsiveness as we've had lots of questions for him as well.
Great. Thank you.
That's just fine.
So the last thing we have tonight is a request to close Ann Street on Saturday, May 2nd for the Cross Crossroads Spring Fest. I think this is pretty straightforward. This is just a work session. Does anyone have any questions regarding this, about the Spring Fest? No? All right, seeing no questions, that will come back as a voting item next week. And we are adjourned. Don't forget to get any potential amendments to the climate resolution into the city clerk and to your colleagues before next Wednesday night. Thank you, everyone. Oh, and don't forget, March 18th is on New Hampshire Rec Center. Meeting's there. Thank you. Where are you at?